We're going to go ahead and get started with a request for cancellation of taxes meeting. It's November 12th, 2025. The time is 11:00 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Everline, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. We'll do the introductions. Sitting in the back, we have Terry Johnston with the B O C C. Up front, on the white shirt is Chief Deputy Jill Smith with the Treasurer's Office, and Kelly Weest with the Treasurer's Office. And we're going to go ahead, and I believe we have Ms. Linda Jones here, and Ms. Judy Stark here for both of the cases. So we're going to go ahead and swear you all in, so please raise your right hand.
Do you solemnly swear that the evidence you shall give in the issue pending before the Kootenay County Board of Commissioners shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is a public comment. Does anyone wish to speak? Hearing nothing. We'll go into our first item. This is a request for adjustment, reconsideration, waive interest and penalties, AIN 304126, Jones. And we have Linda Jones. And if you'd come on up to the table and just hit the button so that the light turns green, and you can just kind of tell us why you're here and what you're hoping to accomplish.
Well, I was here for the September meeting, and it was granted 10%.
You might have to speak up a little bit, because these are recorded too. You can bring that closer. There you go.
I was here for the September meeting, and you all granted me a 10% discount. And I kind of went home and thought about it, and just feel like I'm being very wrong, not by you, mostly actually by the post office. I don't know if you remember, it's, I mailed my property taxes on June 20th, because I was sick. So I got to the post office, dropped it off probably during their lunch hour. And I was unaware that they only have pickup once a day, and that's in the morning. And so I was assuming my taxes would go out on time, maybe at the four o'clock, five o'clock pickup, which they don't have. And I was not aware of that. So I got the letter saying I was late, and I owed late fees and finance charge. So I came and before the board in September and asked for the fee and late charge to be waived, and I was granted 10%. So I'm kind of not really happy with that. I feel like I'm stuck in the middle between county and the post office. And I have gone back and spoken with the post office. I did see the postmaster. I just happened to run into her one day, and she was, oh, very sorry that the county wasn't sympathetic, but there's nothing she could do. So I'm kind of stuck in the middle here, because, you know, I mailed it on the right date, unaware that their policy has changed. Apparently, her explanation is if the post office is 55 miles or more from the Spokane office, they only pick up once a day, which I was unaware of, and that's the situation. So my taxes sat in there until Monday, and were stamped the 23rd of June. So granting me being late, when actually, in my view, I mailed it on the 20th of June, and it was postmarked the 20th of June. So I felt like I wasn't late. So I feel like I'm stuck in the middle here between two entities, you know? And I felt like I did the right. And the only reason I was mailing it on that date is because, like I said, I was sick. We got back from a trip, and my husband and I both had COVID, so it was a little hard to get out and about. So I'm here to plead my case again.
Do you have anything written from the post office?
You know, she wouldn't do it. She said she would not. Her words were, if I put anything in writing, she's risking her job. And I don't know why that would be. Because she did say to me that there were several other people who had the same complaint as I have, that, you know, they mailed it on that date and got the letter that they were late. So, you know, I just, I don't know why she wouldn't. You know, it's, I don't know. It doesn't really make her look bad, because if that's their policy, that's fine. And I'll abide by that from now on, and I'll, I'll know that. But I didn't know that was their procedure. You know, I was in good faith. I think I may have gone in during the lunch hour there. I think they're closed from 12 to 1. Put it in the outgoing mail, and figured, you know, when they got back, they'd stamp it. But I guess they don't stamp it there. Everything goes to Spokane. Which, now that I'm aware of that, I make sure that I either take it to Hayden, or I mail it ahead of time, you know? So a couple of days ahead of time to make the morning mail. So.
Does anyone with the county have any comments they'd like to add?
Jill Smith, Chief Deputy Treasurer, for the record. While I empathize and I understand your frustration, this situation is not unique. We have hundreds of calls every payment cycle from people that the mail wasn't postmarked on the day that they expected it to be postmarked. If they call us, we always recommend that you get it hand stamped if you're mailing on the deadline, because we know that sometimes the, if you're putting it in, it's not going to get processed that day. And for me, and the reason that my office didn't waive the interest in penalties is I feel like we are so restricted by statute in the, with the circumstances in which we're allowed to refund or to waive interest in penalties. And when we open the door, what you do for one, you do for all. So everyone whose mail, the postmark was different than the day they got it in the box, we would have to waive their interest in penalties.
Well, the only reason I'm here is I feel like, you know, I'm, I'm not making this up. This is exactly what happened. I don't know if all the hundreds of people came before the commissioners, but I'm trying to fight for what I feel is right. And I know that maybe it's out of my ignorance, because I didn't know their procedure. You know, I didn't know that it wouldn't have gone out that day. That was my, maybe my error, but nothing was stated there until after. Now, they put a little sign up now, and it really doesn't explain, just if you need something postmarked to come see them at the desk, you know? And you have to be there during open hours. So, you know, it's just an unfortunate situation. I got caught in it, but I didn't know I was, I was going to, you know, have this situation. I thought I was on the right, but, and I always try and do the right. I've never been late on my property taxes as a homeowner up here for many years. So, going on my record, I don't know. I just feel like, you know, it's an unfortunate situation, and I've learned, but I'm still trying to fight for this one situation, because I feel like it's, I'm kind of caught in the middle here. I mean, I go back to the post office and see, fight them and see if they would give me a letter. But she, she said she wouldn't. You know, the one time I actually got to run into her, when I went, I went in there three different times, and each time she refused to speak with me. And the third time I went in there, they happened to not be very busy, and the gal that recognized me, she and the postmaster were just talking, because they weren't busy. And so I struck up a conversation with her, and she actually spoke with me and just gave me her sympathies about it, but wouldn't write a letter for me. So that's kind of how I stuck.
Does anyone have any questions up here?
I got stuck with that one before, too.
Did you?
And I make sure that I get it in.
Yeah.
I usually drive it right over to the county offices and pop it in there.
Yeah, that's true. I live up in Apple, but, you know, online next time.
Inside 2020.
Yeah. I like to pay everything online. I just, my property taxes is just something I've always mailed. And it was just unfortunate. Like I said, we were homesick, and normally I would have sent it a week early, week or two early, but I just didn't. I was sick, and I just thought, I have one more day before I have to get out of bed and go do this, you know? So, but like I said, online, I usually pay everything online, but my property taxes, I kind of like having that in writing.
I think the challenge here is the fact that, what the chief deputy said, that, you know, we're, we have to have a reason why we're doing it. So let me give you a couple of examples, okay? One is, suppose that you turned in the mail, and it was stamped, but it fell behind a piece of equipment at the post office. And we didn't receive it for three months, because that happens every once in a while. I've gotten mail that was actually post stamped, that was stamped two years earlier.
Yeah.
And someone found it and put it back into the mail stream, and we got it. Because it was stamped, that shows that you submitted it to the post office by the deadline, and we can, we can forgive that. Okay? I don't doubt the fact that you're telling the truth. But the problem is, is that the next person who, who says that, how, what are we supposed to do? Right? And the next person, and the next person. And the reality is that the county, we didn't make a mistake. The post office made the mistake. I mean, that's why we leave earlier to go to the airport, right? In case there's traffic, in case something happens, to give us that margin, you know? And, and, I mean, I feel for your situation, but the problem is, is that we have no documentation whatsoever outside of your word, which I have no doubt that you're telling the truth.
And my only defense is I was ill, and I, normally I would have mailed it sooner. I just, and I don't put anything in my mailbox anymore, because I've had that situation.
Because, that's right, because checks can be taken and then washed, and it's terrible.
Postal person sometimes isn't the most responsible, and it falls behind the seat.
And so when that margin gets closer, you know, you have to have less people in the equation. And that's why a lot of people show up. There's a line upstairs on the deadline of people turning in their checks to make sure that they're paid on time. I think we have a drop box, at least we used to, you know, where it gets in there, and we have someone who can say, I picked everything up by the deadline, and that's certified. And if that person were sick and they didn't pick it up, then they would say, I was late. And so these people in this batch should not be penalized. Here, we're in this difficult situation, because the, the post office has admitted to you that they could have done this right, or something could have happened to avoid this. Yet, they're not willing to put that in writing. We have nothing to base it on. And so let's fast forward six, 12 months, and people go, they ask, how come the board let this one, let Ms. Jones, you know, buy just on her word? What was the basis for that?
Who would question that?
It's not a matter of whether who would question it. It's a matter of the fact that, that we're putting ourselves in these situations. They become arbitrary decisions, even though I don't doubt what happened. But we need something that says a mistake occurred, and you shouldn't be penalized for it. And we don't have that. And that's the part that makes it difficult. No one, no one up here wants you to have to pay these things. But the fact is that we, by statute, have rules and regulations in place that we have to follow. And so if there is a reason that we can show, not tell, but show, why this happened, I don't think anyone on this board would object to removing the penalties and interest.
Right.
But we don't.
I don't know how I'm supposed to get her to put it in writing, because, you know, I mean,
Sometimes, sometimes people don't do their jobs, and we have to pay for that as a result of that, you know? That entity is not our entity. We have no nexus to them outside of receiving their work product, what they mail us, or what other people mail to us. So we're in a very difficult situation, and we tried to do something, at least because you spent your time coming in. And I think this board, you know, I realize 10% isn't much, but 10% is something. It's better than nothing. And I get the sense from you that you see us as, there's something wrong with us. We didn't create this situation.
Right.
You know, and, and your bill went out not a week before. How, how much earlier do the bills go out? Several months, right? A month? I mean, so there was an entire month. I doubt that there would have been any interest that lost, would have been lost if, if it was mailed immediately versus the last day. I mean, I'm just trying to put it into perspective that, what did we do wrong?
You're not doing anything wrong.
Okay, but then.
The post office are actually in the wrong, but they will not cooperate with me. So I'm pleading to you guys to waive the fee that you're charging me. And that's a lot of groceries.
But, but we can't do that without something, you know? I mean, we just can't, you know, because there's no basis outside of your word. And so as a, as a show of appreciation.
My history of my paying of taxes on time every year, I mean, like I said.
But we have a lot of people who fall into this situation.
Here, in front of the board.
Well, you know, but you got something and they didn't.
Because I appeared.
That's right. You got something and they didn't. So you, you did get something.
Okay, not enough, I don't believe. How about 50%?
Well, you know, if you can convince my contemporaries up here to do that, you know, but for myself, I feel like we've done something. We haven't done anything wrong. We always try to find areas where we can give grace, you know? But the reality is that, you know, that, that through a series of circumstances, it led to you going to the post office at the very last minute, and they failed to do their job. So the margin of error for a mistake to occur was huge at that point, because there was no time buffer. And as a result of it, it didn't work in your favor. And, and you spent time coming to us, and we were willing to give you something. And, and that was just based off your word. And so I'm a little bit confused as to why we're not, you know, we're not the good party of all the parties associated with this issue.
Well, I don't say you're not the good party. I'm just hoping that you'd be a little bit more, I hate this word, empathetic. I like sympathetic, but, you know, it's a lot of money. And just like you said, if it had been postmarked on that date, we wouldn't be discussing this, you know?
Sure.
I would owe the money, you know?
Yeah.
Again, we're kind of bound by state law, which says hardship or mistake upon the county. And so for us to even make the 10% agreement could, could come back and, and be a problem for us. But again, we, like Commissioner Matarri said, we're trying to at least give something, you know, to, for an understanding of your circumstance. And have you written an official letter to the post office? Have you gone above the Apple post office? Because I'm sure that they have somebody over them, the next higher level.
I guess I would have to reach out to Spokane.
I'm just curious, has the post office given you anything as a result of their mistake?
No.
They've given you nothing?
Just verbal. I'm geez, kind of threw it back at, I didn't, you know, like, you're not.
So they made the mistake, and they've given you nothing.
Right, right.
But we didn't.
She would not give, she wouldn't give me anything in writing.
And we didn't make a mistake, and we at least gave you 10%.
Yeah. So just an idea is maybe write them a letter and say that you incurred this expense because of their operations, which they didn't adequately notify the public on. And I don't know, just, you never know. Might be worth a try.
That's true. Yeah, that's true.
Commissioner Everline?
I've always thought property taxes were a crime against humanity. And it's, and, and the reason being, it should be your home is your home. But at the same time, the state of Idaho made it in a different way to do it. And so I think it's a crime against humanity. If you're going to do it, do it with sales taxes, not, not property taxes.
I agree, I agree.
That's my thought.
Maybe because you're tired, I don't know.
Well, with respect to this situation, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, change this, change it.
Wow.
Use, use some sales tax.
Well, yes, but with respect to Ms. Jones, we have this issue before us, and she's asking for for more grace.
I'm kind of aware of that.
Yes.
I've gone through this before.
I understand.
And I've had to say, I'm sorry, I can't, we can't do it.
Okay.
So it's, they change the statute of the state of Idaho.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're more lenient, but eh, is my situation. So you're just saying, that's it, no more off? You won't negotiate a little bit more off?
Well, it's not a negotiation.
See, I got, I've gotten bitten by that, too. Same thing, like a thousand dollars. And it was, it was a bummer. But I live in and learned.
Well, I've never late with my bills. This is the first time ever. And it just, it, it's irritating, and, you know, yes, I should have mailed it sooner, but I was sick, and that was just my situation.
Well, mail has been notoriously less reliable over the years.
That's why I'm using the post office. I didn't put it in my mailbox. You know what I'm saying? I thought I was doing the right thing. I, I, it was in good faith, doing the right thing, and it still came back to me.
I usually just take my check in and just put it on their desk. And you've, and you've seen that. I know that for sure.
So, okay, well.
Thank you for coming in.
Just to let you know.
Do we need to do a motion?
We negotiated a new agreement with our payment processing vendor.
Are you ready?
So if you pay with an electronic check online, there's no cost.
I move that we deny the request for an adjustment for AIN 304126.
Did you catch that, Tina?
Catch what?
I made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that there was one.
Yeah.
Mark seconded?
Uh, no, he didn't realize.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. And that was to deny.
Okay. So I don't know, too?
All right.
So today, because I'm done, you know, a second dollars.
Do we backdate her interest in penalties to September, when she started this, or do we? Because interest in penalties have accrued, interest has accrued every day, because she didn't make the payment.
I'm fine with going to the first. I mean, but.
When she appealed first, when that judgment came down.
Okay.
Do you want, do you want a motion?
Yeah, since you just denied, I think you need an additional motion.
Uh, no, I actually just asked denied. Okay.
Redo the motion.
Okay, so scratch that one. And I move that we approve the request for adjustment to the date. Jill, do you have that date? Yeah.
September 10, was it?
Okay, so I move that we forgive penalties and interest after September 10.
Interest.
Interest. Sorry.
Second.
Commissioner Everline? Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. And that was to forgive the interest after September 10, 2025.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, on to item two. This is a request for adjustment, waive interest and penalties for AIN 116625, United Presbyterian Church of Spirit Lake. And Ms. Judy Stark, why don't you come on up to the front table? The microphone is already on, and you can tell us about the situation.
Good morning. We're a small church, and sometimes people open envelopes that other people don't know about. But what has happened is that we have paid $93 and something for several, I think several years, but, because I recognize the amount. But it appears that we did not, in the last three years since '22, when we got the message saying we wanted to lean against the property, that you've sent the, you, basically, we have not received a bill. So I came in to find out why, to pay the 127 that was urgent, and find out what happened, that we didn't seem to have a bill. Was it our fault, or something needed to be fixed? And thanks to the lovely people in Treasury, we managed to get that down to, it's been sent to the wrong address. It's been sent to the 66174 Street address, and in Spirit Lake, you have a post office box. And if it doesn't go to the post office box, it doesn't go to the person. So I came in, found out the problem, paid the, the urgent one, went to let the, change the address for Treasury, went to Assessor, got the address changed for Assessor, went back up to Commissioners, and got the address changed there, although we had been getting, thanks to Commissioners Office, you've got great people. We've gotten that for the exemption. So originally, I thought the exemption was the problem. But, so we're down to, then I went back downstairs and paid the Treasurer, and I am asking for the, I think it's $66.88 of fees and penalties to be expunged, be forgiven.
Any questions?
Yeah, probably for the Treasurer's Office. As far as the mailing address, does that happen often? I mean, it sounds like.
I actually did some research on this, sorry, Kelly Weest, for the record. I did some research, did look back at some previous bills, and it's actually been at this address for quite some time. I'm going to say 2015, 16, 17 years at least, as far back as I could find anything with the Jefferson address.
16, 17 years.
And the other challenge for us is, again, statute is narrow, and not receiving your bill is not a reason that allows us to waive interest and penalties, because the assumption is that you know that you have property taxes due, and it's your responsibility to pay them, whether you receive the bill or not, unless it's a county error. But the fact that the address has been the same, and they were paying the bills, and they didn't correct the address in those years, makes it hard for me to call that a county error.
Questions?
Probably my only other one to the church is, is the $66 a hardship? I mean, is it?
It's not necessarily a hardship, because I or someone else will cover it, but I'm vowed to vowed to steward as well as I can. And I don't know why, I don't know who, we have a different person as Treasurer, I'm clerk. So I don't know how that, the bills came to us before. But apparently, in the last three years, it's gone to the physical address rather than the other. But I've gone through the process. I appreciate all the help that I got, and it's taken care of. And if you can't forgive it, I'll go down the hall and pay it.
Well, thank you for coming in.
You're welcome. Thank you for your attention.
You know, it's, again, another challenging situation. Our job is to mail the bills, not ensure they're delivered. We rely upon the post office to make sure they're delivered. It had been occurring for many, many years.
I do have a question of wondering how it got to us before, because if it wasn't sent to the P O box, they shouldn't have gotten to us before. But I would have to try to go back through our records, and I have more else to do.
And that's one of the challenges with an organization, is that people come and go, but the organization is still responsible
Right.
for its financial obligations.
And now everything has changed. Do I need to go to anyone other than Treasury and Assessor and Commissioners to make sure that you all have the proper mailing address now? The physical address is the same. The mailing address needs to be the P O box, and there's notes on the pay, on there, as far as I know. Is there anything else I need to do for the next time?
I think you should be good, because it's been updated in the Treasurer's Office, and they mail the bills.
Yeah. They've got, and they've got the proper address with the notes, and so does the Assessor now.
Yeah, and it sounds like the Commissioner's Office does. So that would be coming after the first of the year, when we mail out the exemption.
Well, Commissioners have gotten to me because of the exemptions. That's been coming.
Yeah.
It's the other, the tax bill that happened.
Okay, good.
So, thank you.
All right.
We'll take care of it.
Things 10%.
Not much to be done.
All right, well, take a motion.
All right, then I move that we deny the request for adjustment to waive interest in penalties for AIN 116625.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Again, thank you both for coming in. I'm sorry it didn't work out necessarily the way you wanted it to, but, you know, we are confined in many ways. So, thank you. Next up is public comment. Anyone wishes to speak?
I would like to compliment you on the people who make the county work.
Well, thank you. We have some outstanding people working for the county, so thank you. Well, with that said, 11:28. Meeting adjourned.
When I first got in, I was going to run for office.